Sometimes. All right, good evening. Today is Wednesday, September 10th, 2025. We're in the Eldon F. Marrera Board of Selectmen Meeting Room located on the second floor of Town Hall. The time is 6:30 PM. Before we stand for the pledge, just please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and a local cable station. If you can stand, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The very first item on the agenda this evening is a joint meeting. If you recall, at town meeting, we changed the process in which the finance committee is appointed. It went from being a sort of a separate standalone committee under the guidance of the town moderator to this format, which is basically the three selectmen along with the town clerk, Annie. And Jason, our town mar- Jason Ross, our town moderator, is on the phone to complete the five-person committee. For tonight, we have, we have two open spots on the committee, and we have two applicants, as it turns out. So, two people that I'm very familiar with, with my time on finance committee. So, we have Jan Fox, or Janice Fox, to be formal, I guess, is applying for reappointment for another three-year term. And then in addition, we have Scott Weatherby, who is applying also for a three-year term. So, after a year off for, we're just going to leave it there. So, with that in mind, I am very familiar with the both of these people, and I think they're qualified, and they do a great job on finance committee. But I, you know, you've had, I will turn it over to maybe you guys who didn't have the pleasure of sitting with them for three years.
Yeah, I haven't sat with you, but I've heard great things, and I've obviously, as a resident, observed and attended plenty of meetings, so I'm, I'm in favor. I like.
Just to be clear, because I think it was not really stated that these are, it's two people, two separate positions. It's not two people for one position, so I feel like people might want to-
Thank you.
-know that as well. No, and I've read over both these. That'll be, you've ever worked hand-in-hand, Harvey. We've been in joint rooms, and I've seen, and I'm very pleased with our community guys too, so the town is very lucky to have you guys. And thank you for continuing to want to help the town and be part of it.
Thank you.
Annie, anything?
I'm happy with both of them. Happy with the choice. Dealt with them on many occasions.
Well, there's a stamp of approval. I've never heard one. Jason, want to give the opportunity to chime in?
Yeah, definitely. I think they're both great candidates. They've both given a lot to the town, and I think that, you know, Jan will continue to serve the town well, and it'd be nice to see Scott back on the committee as well.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions for us, or anything? This is an easy one for me.
So, just to let you know, the official vote will be that it will become effective on 10/1/2025 for three-year terms.
Okay.
For each one of them, for both.
Okay, so we're going to do this one at a time. I'll make a motion that we appoint Janice Fox to the finance committee, effective 1/1, I'm sorry, 10/1/2025, for a three-year term. Because Jason is on the phone, we have to do this as a roll call vote, so we'll take a second.
Second, and Perez, yes?
Lee, yes.
Yanitelli, yes.
Jason?
Ross, yes.
Okay, and Ryan, yes. And then I will somewhat repeat the motion. I'll make a motion that we appoint Scott Weatherby to a three-year term in finance committee, beginning on 10/1/2025. And again, I'll take a second.
Perez, yes?
Lee, yes.
Yanitelli, yes.
Jason?
Yeah.
And then Ryan, yes. So, with that in mind, I think that that is all it takes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you in advance for what's, I'm sure, going to be an exciting three years. So, but it's a lot of hours, a lot of time, and, you know, we know the hours, we know the time, and you both know, and it's a nice, it's a big commitment you're making, so thank you.
We appreciate it. We know how hard it is to get people to step up in town and volunteer, so we really do appreciate you giving your time. Thank you.
Just one item of note. Later on the agenda, the Board of Selectmen will be voting on a town meeting, a special town meeting in October, because we have to do a couple of zoning amendments and a couple of small things, so Finance Committee will sit for that in early October. I'll be in touch with you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the answer.
Thank you both.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you. Jason, you're more than welcome to hang on the phone or be dismissed.
I'm going to split, because I have to hop into another meeting, but thank you guys for including me. I appreciate it.
Understood. Thank you, Jason.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay. The time, we have a 6:40 public hearing, but we have a few minutes. The next item on the agenda does not actually need a vote, really just an FYI, that there's going to be a charity softball tournament taking place. The date that's listed is actually the rain date. The charity softball tournament will be on the 21st with the rain date of the 28th. There's an entertainment license there, but it's to play softball on a Sunday. We don't, we don't need the entertainment license for that, so. Next, I'll entertain a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 17th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of August 13th, 2025, for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trying to see what fits into the two minutes we have until the meeting.
Send it.
Let's go down, I guess, we'll go to site plan review. David, I don't know, can we do that in two minutes? I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
The site plan review on 321, 323 Manly Street, that is currently on the same property or, maybe it's two different processes, but anyway, there's already a warehouse there. It's 102,000 square feet. This is a 9600 square one that will be built in the rear of it. It's industrial zoned, it fits for our zoning, it'll go for its site plan through the planning board. It's in the water resource district, so they'll have additional regulatory review of it, but it's in the right place, and so.
Yeah, I don't, you know, more industrial than industrial, you know, in a, in a existing location. I don't have any objection.
Me neither.
Okay. Just let that go. Two minutes, we'll keep going. Site plan modification.
Yeah, so the modification is, is that Lincoln Street always had an access road that we really pushed with them, we wanted them to have from the beginning. The original access road was going to through the, go through the existing Shell gas station because that property is burned into by an easement for multiple reasons. That has been delayed literally for years, as DOT has been involved, Shell has been involved, but we were unrelenting on the fact that we want access road. At the end of the day, what they are going to do is, I highlighted it so you could see it, is that we're going to push the access road on going through the Shell gas station and move it a little bit further eastbound, and so therefore, there'll still be an access road, which was important to us, because I want to get as much truck traffic off of Lincoln Street as possible. This will help to alleviate a little bit of the traffic coming off the off-ramp that DOT was concerned about, because they thought that the access road going through the Shell gas station was too close, and therefore, is going to have an impact. And even though 106 is a town road, they were trying to claim jurisdiction, because there would be an impact on the ramp, which is state property. So, this solves those issues. So, with that said, this, they have to modify the existing site plan with the planning board. They've been in touch with Tracy and Hugh Hurley, so Hugh is expecting this to come forward as well.
So, just a question, is that going to dump out into, onto Lincoln, or is that going to dump out directly on 106?
It doesn't dump out either direction, because it's a one-way directly into the-
106 into the warehouse.
So, it's, it's an entrance only to get people off 106 and into their property.
And not taking Lincoln. Like, or at least that front portion of Lincoln. Okay.
To get out before the light, basically, and not hold up traffic.
And, and are, is there any way that we can mandate that they use it, to have vehicles X amount of weight to go through that path, or no?
I don't know, but we're certainly going to encourage it, but I don't know if we can mandate it.
Yeah, vehicles over X amount of GBW to go down?
Yeah, if they're going to the warehouse.
If they're going to the warehouse.
And we could, certainly, I could have a conversation with the planning board, and potentially, we can put the sign up to try to mandate it from there, because that's where we want it to go. We want it, I don't, nobody wants, we want to minimize the amount of truck traffic on Lincoln Street to the minimum. So, so I could, certainly, if you want, I could capture that as a comment.
Yeah, I think, Mike, that's an excellent recommendation, but, you know, our, you know, comment is that signage be strongly worded to direct any and all traffic.
Yeah, because we could force an access road, however, it's, they could just make the road and then just lock the gate.
Yeah. If it's not used, it's worthless.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess the Mike, yeah, two parts, I think, David, for me on that, but it not be, it not be closed.
Yep.
And be encouraged for warehouse traffic.
Yeah, captured.
Great. So, do we need to vote on that, or are we just?
Your choice. I mean, I've captured it, but if you want to take a vote, you can take it.
Yeah, why don't we? So, I'll make a motion that the recommendation we make to the planning board includes two stipulations. One, that there be strong language, signage with strong language, to, to get trucks that are visiting that warehouse to drive down that road. Two, that road be available at all times.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. It is now 6:40. We have a, a public hearing. I'm going to read the notice, and then we can move on. Town of West Bridgewater Public Hearing, Board of Selectmen, notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 89, Section 9, Designation of Highways as Throughways, Traffic Control Signs and Devices. The West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing at 6:40 PM on September 10th in the Eldon F. Marrera Selectmen Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Mass, where the Board will vote to add additional stop signs at the intersection of Crescent Street and West Street. Board of Selectmen, Jeffrey P. Ryan, Chair. With that being said, to entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, I'm so, so, I'm so sorry.
No, go.
So, we have, I placed a request, I met with the DPW director. This all stemmed from, you're going to eventually vote on MOU with DOT. But DOT is offering us four at no charge solar-powered blinking stop signs. And these were the intersections that they were requesting that we put it on, was this intersection and the Crescent-North Elm one, which we'll talk about in a moment. So, as linked, as, as the DPW director and I were standing out there, we had Mike, and we also had Linda, Mike Hutchinson, we said, we really got to do something with this intersection. Jeff and I, you and I had talked about it in the past, it's, not only do we know it's dangerous, the numbers substantiate that it is the most dangerous area of our town. And while we were standing out there, a couple of residents came out to ask us what was going on, because they saw the yellow blinking lights, and when we told them what we were attempting to do, they were pretty happy, say, you've got to do something, because they all see the accidents, and sometimes it impacts their properties. So, I think long-term, I'm going to have to bring something back to the Board, that we either look at doing a rotary, or we turn this into some other four-way intersection. We do something. I don't know what that is. We'll have to have it engineered. I'm not making a recommendation on that tonight, but what can we do in the short term that we can afford? And so, Phil came up with this as a recommendation, so you'll see the legend corresponds to the numbers in the map. We'll start at the top, left-hand side one. Currently, West Street is not, it is not signalized. There is no stop sign. So, standing up there multiple times, it is amazing to me how many people drive on West Street towards, say, Eastern, and they go through that intersection, and they have every right to go through the intersection. They're not doing anything wrong, but they're going through without even a concept that somebody might be coming the other way, and they just fly through that line. And they're going 30, 35, 40 miles an hour, and the same thing in reverse. They have every right, it is, that's, that's the road. But unfortunately, too many other people coming in both the other directions don't know they're supposed to stop, and that's how intersections occur, because it doesn't look like it should be a through road on, on the West Street side. So, to try to help to mitigate from a public safety concern as best as we can, we're thinking that where number one is, is that we would put a stop sign. So, we put the stop sign there, and that would be a blinking light, a blinking stop sign. So, people would stop there. Then what we would do is, we would, right now, to the right of that, you'll see there's an island, the DPW will build an island that does not currently exist. The stop sign to the south of that island currently exists, and then we would add an additional stop sign, so that way, people coming from Crescent Street going straight or taking a left would have to stop. So, those correspond to one and two on the legend. I'm going to start with four first, so four is a current stop sign, so we would maintain that one. And then, traveling from, say, Eastern on West Street, traveling in easterly bound direction, we would add a stop sign, and we would make that a blinking stop sign. But in addition to that, prior to that, about a couple of hundred feet, you could see there's a number five, and we are going to add at our expense, we are going to add a blinking stop ahead sign. We feel that because we're going to have to put up signage, there's a whole process, just can't do it overnight, but we feel that it will be important, because this will be a habitual change in, in, in traffic flow, that we want to try to warn people as best as we can. So, in order to do any stop signs, you require a public hearing with notice to the public, that's why you read the, the notice that was placed in the newspaper. At this point, you could vote for it as is, you can say no, you can make whatever changes you want, you're not tied to anything, but this was what we were recommending, and so it's whatever the Board would decide.
I think I have one recommendation, just looking at this, and I'm, I'm scared of this intersection at, at all times. But where the yield is right now, coming from West Street, making that left onto Crescent Street, people go on that yield like mock Jesus.
Yep.
You see the yield?
I, I do.
They come around, and I'm sure you see it, like, they come around like they have the right of way, and if you're coming down Crescent Street, going towards where A is, you, you, you got to know to stop, because they're going to come around that corner going.
Yep. We looked at this. The problem that we have is that that yield is only two and a half car lengths long. So, if you put a stop sign there, and people are in there, it's then going to stop the flow of traffic going back onto West Street. And so, that then becomes an additional public safety issue. If you want to put a stop sign there, we can do that. I'm just letting you know, we did look at it, we spent a lot of time looking at it, physically there and studying it on the computer, and, and we are concerned that we're going to, we're going to back traffic up in that area and compound the problem.
My first thought, I'm with you, my first thought on that, and I defer to the people that deal with traffic, my thought was close that, that just doesn't exist, and people come up to the stop sign and take a left, because what happens now, this is where I drive every day, coming home, and I come west, because we all know 106, I don't need to talk about that. But what happens is, if you take that left, as soon as there's a couple of cars in there, we have other cars that go up to what is number three, right? There's no stop sign there.
And make that left, too.
And they bang a left, and that's arguably the most dangerous thing you can do.
Yep.
Because you're not looking for them.
I was coming home from work the other day, because I'm through this intersection twice a day, five days a week, and I was coming home from work the other day, and I take that yield right there. I'm, I'm there at that yield sign, and I had, you know, nobody was there, I was going, but there was somebody that didn't want to wait, and they came, and they almost hit me coming out of there. So, I, I do agree that if we're going to reconfigure that whole intersection, maybe that, that whole area just goes, because that stop sign at three there, that traffic's going to back up anyway, so that yield is going to be backed up anyway, that, that lane there.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'm probably 60% saying block it, 40% saying leave it, because the stop sign's just going to push traffic back anyhow.
Mm-hmm.
And if we can, and, and now there's no incentive to go to the stop sign, to take the left. So, you know, maybe this is a, a phase one, and if it's good enough, it stays that way. Maybe phase two is, if there's still accidents and still stuff going on, we, we kill the yield.
I think the yield-
I'm not, I'm not trying to end the discussion on the stop sign.
No, no, no. I just, my, my feeling is, if we kill it, then we have no space in the future, potentially, to do a compound. You know?
Well, when we do the round, it's, it's going to require a full engineering set of drawings, some study, and then, you know, so, so I think we have an opportunity to make some amendments in the future.
Yeah.
Thinking about what the three of you said, where number four is, we have that triangular island now.
Mm-hmm.
What if we stretch the island that is on the northbound side all the way to where the yellow line is, so therefore, you actually make the whole yield pathway disappear?
So, you just have the right turn and not coming through the other way?
And then, to your point, then you go up to the stop sign, now you're forced to take a left, and you don't have the ability to go left onto where the current yield pathway is, because we put the island, we, we stretched the island.
Yeah, my only, and it's, it's what I asked for, and now I'm going to, you know, maybe I've been in the seat too long, I'm not going to talk out the other side of my mouth. My only concern is when we put number three there, and, and if there's one stop sign that needs to go in this whole intersection, it's number three, because when you're coming from Honeydew, right, down this way, you can't see cars, and some cars are going by there 40, 50 miles an hour. That's the accident.
Absolutely.
I mean, that is always the accident right there. It's, you know, those of us that haven't been, anybody who've driven that road in one or two years has come close. But I don't, like, if traffic's backed up, and now we're just adding three more cars to the backup, that could just take that left and go, because maybe the left's easier to take when everybody's stopping, coming the other way.
It is.
So, I, as much as I, I asked for that to start, I think maybe, step one, we see how this goes, and, and see if that makes sense, and then-
Yeah.
-revisit it six months later, if it, if it doesn't, and, and then, you know, then make it go away, is kind of the other choice, or the stop sign. I don't, again, Mike, I'm not trying to-
No, no, I'm just, I avoid the scenario.
I can't.
Me neither.
This started with, you know, residents coming to me.
I, I avoid it because I have a big truck.
Yep.
And-
It's got big hips.
Yeah, this is how, you know, maybe, maybe when 106 is done, and that is, should be moving, this gets a little better, because I'm sure there's a lot of cars that are looping around-
Absolutely.
-to avoid that altogether right now.
Yeah, and I mean, I will tell you, my long-term plan, again, not making a recommendation tonight, but I do think that West Street should eventually be converted into a one-way. So, that way, if you're traveling West Street, again, from Eastern, you come to that stop sign. If you want to go to 106, you'll be forced to go Crescent Street, because you'll now have the benefit of the light to go left, to continue to traveling onto West Street and then fight traffic-
Yeah.
-that's going to, it defeats the whole purpose. So, I do think that should be part of the long-term plan, but if you're good with this, we'll go with this as a test run. If you want to make some other modifications, let me know, it's whatever you prefer.
I like the eventual idea of making that a one-way, because watching people come out of West Street there and fight to take a left is almost comical, because it's just, I mean, and, and the fact that they still do it sometimes, like during rush hour, like they've never driven the road. Some of them act like it's their first time, and they're brand-new. It is, it's, it's kind of funny, but wouldn't be me.
Mike, your thoughts?
Oh, I, I like the one-way idea. I, I mean, I'm good seeing how this goes. I foresee our new area of concern being where that yield is, because people are going to come in hot, hotter now, because they waited in a stop sign for an extra three minutes, or two minutes, depending on how backed up it is.
Yep.
And I foresee that yield now.
If you want, if you want to make the recommendation now, we can make it, I just-
No, we could wait and, and see how it goes, but I just, I don't want to see-
I mean, you've got two of us that, I'm good for three, four days a week coming home that way, so.
Yeah, I'm five days. So, I'll let you know how it goes.
I mean, the unfortunate reality and truth is, until we spend a considerable amount of money studying it and then redesigning it, everything is abandoned.
Yeah, but I think this, this is a safety issue, and this will address that.
It's a good start.
Like I said, the people coming, coming south and west, northwest, but they're flying.
Well, and Jeff, you've said from the beginning, you want to be data-driven, so if we do this, and six months later, we collect new data, then we know, we, good or bad, but we're making an attempt.
Agreed.
So, are you comfortable with this plan, then, and that's how you would like us to proceed?
I'm good.
Yes.
I am as well.
Okay, so, we'll proceed on this plan. I'll just, I will need a vote, please, but we'll proceed on this plan as presented.
Yeah, make a motion that we proceed as, as displayed on the screen, with the four stop signs, as they are currently presented, along with the one additional warning sign.
And that island is the addition, too, right?
Yep.
Like, that goes into, okay, yeah, I just want to be clear. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Super. I'll entertain a motion now to close the public hearing.
Nope, we have one more.
Oh.
So sorry, because, oh, I'm so, yep, you're right, you're right.
Here.
You're ahead of me.
And then the other one.
It's rare. Mark that, mark that in the calendar.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll skip the town meeting for right now, David, we'll take care of the MOU. Is that where you were going?
I was.
Okay.
Is that what you would like to do?
Sure, good.
So, so again, as I said, said earlier, is that a lot of what we did was because Jeff had come to me with some time ago in ruffus, trying to rework that intersection, and at the same time, DOT has made available four LED blinking stop signs. In full disclosure, do we have the picture of, um-
North Elm.
North Elm and Crescent?
My second.
See if I can find the one. Just from the baseball field.
That's right, that's what I saw.
So, so, the MOU before you is for DOT to provide to us a no-charge four LED blinking stop signs. Two of them, we just voted that we're going to place at the other intersection, and two of them, we're going to place at North Elm Street, or we would like to place in North Elm Street and Crescent. We originally had a conversation in full disclosure with DOT about potentially making that into a four-way stop. I think that that's problematic. DOT thought it was problematic, that would require some engineering study and, and also a conversation, obviously, with the full board. So, here's our intersection. What we would like to do is that on Crescent Street, as you're coming from the left-hand side, so you're traveling westbound, you'll see currently there are two stop signs there. You will, could go back just a little bit where you were, a little more? Perfect, thank you. You'll see there are two stop signs there currently. The one that is on the southbound si- on the southbound side, although those are static, what we're looking to do is to turn that stop sign into a blinking stop sign. And there is a house there, but we're going to angle it the other way, so you can see one's angled this way, the other one's going to be angled the other way.[1719.61] And the reason is, is because the one that is on the Brockton side is almost entirely hidden from the telephone pole and from trees that are there. So we felt that if we put the blinking light there, it's just gonna be useless. So we'll place it on the other side. The public audience is aware of two stop signs, but now hopefully they'll help. So we'll place it on that, on that one. And then if we'll move over to the other side, please. You'll see that there is a stop sign that is on the Brockton side as well, and we are gonna convert that one into a blinking one, because the sightline on that one is better. If you look on the other one, where there's a static one, there is a house, there's no good way to angle it, because if we angle it, we're gonna face into the other house, and there's a tree blocking that line of sight as well. So we're gonna put the blinking light there. I don't need a vote for that, because that's just, we're already existing stop signs. But I want to let you know that what the MOU is doing is it's providing us at no cost these LED blinking lights, stop signs. So that's where we plan on placing them. It is a two-year agreement, which means in theory, we would keep them up for two years, and then after the two years, if they become ours. If we don't keep them up for two years, and DOT has the right to take them, however, if they get damaged, say a truck hits them, or they fail, they do not work, then it's our expense to fix them or to replace them. After two years, we can do whatever we want with them. It's a test run, so I'm sure the long-term goal is to have more blinking lights throughout. I have talked to my colleagues about this, and while many of my colleagues tell me that they find it to be pretty useful, you have to be really, really sensitive, because in the middle of the night, they blink nonstop, and we're not, we don't want to hinder, obviously, our residents.
Mm-hmm.
So the MOU is a multi-year agreement, and I can't sign one, only the Board of Suckin' can, so that's why it's before you. So if you have questions about this, if you don't like it, then obviously we'll do something, you know, we won't do it. But if you do like this, and you like the idea of the LED blinking lights, then I would ask you then to take a vote and approve the MOU and sign it.
Yeah, I have no issue with this. I know we run a really tight budget in town consistently, year over year over year, and I've had a couple of conversations with you, David, about this. But we need to start finding money for traffic safety. Our town has substantially grown in size with really no change. You know, I think we added stop signs on Scotland and some speed bumps. But we haven't done much, and the towns around has grown. As Marcy and I know, coming off of Crescent, it is a giant cut-through, as Scotland was a giant cut-through, and I'm sure there are more of those. And I think, you know, it's impossible for our, you know, our public safety people to be everywhere, and we're stretching them more and more and more. And I think an investment in traffic safety can certainly help. A, make it a little safer for our residents. B, as much as we're spending some money to do that, it should save us some money with calls and other things along those lines. So I don't know what that number is, but I'd like to try to work with Phil or whoever, and come up with a fund or, you know, a line item to support some of that effort, so.
But currently, these are free, so I'll take free.
Yes. Yeah, no, this is fantastic, right?
I mean, anything that's free.
And this is, this is an intersection where there's, you know, an equal amount of accidents. This is tough.
Yeah.
Largely driven from the people coming south on North Elm, not using a directional.
Yep.
Or using a directional, not turning one of the two.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we could put a sign up there saying, you know, use your blinker.
Well, we should put those signs up everywhere, though.
My initial reaction was, like, what if the residents of those homes complain about the blinking lights? But then, I also see the blinking lights in the direction that the traffic flows, and when a car goes by there, any hour of the night, they have lights.
They're getting lights anyway.
So I think that although there is somewhat of a, maybe a concern that a resident might say something like, of the blinking lights, they also can't stop the lights of the vehicles, so it's twofold, and it's not like they're making any noise, they're just blinking. So I don't have any issues with this at all. I also think that this is a dangerous intersection. I go this way to drop my kids off at school currently, and the road doesn't make any sense to me, but we need to go out roads in Massachusetts.
So I think that while residents could possibly have concerns about the blinking lights, the reduction in possible accidents in front of their homes might be a bonus, or, you know, just being able to get out of the driveway or something like that. I don't know that they really have that much problem, but, you know, just with the traffic in the area, if it helps at all, I think the residents in that immediate area will benefit.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and worst case is, if these blinking lights really are that burdensome, and that's what it appears, you abandon the idea, right? I mean
At no charge.
You know, it's
Move them.
Then, you know, we do what we have to do. It's, we want to do the right thing for the residents, but I think you're right, Marcy, is that they've got to hear, those residents unfortunately have to hear metal hitting metal sometimes.
Yeah.
And if we can try to stop that, it's a benefit to everybody, and nobody wants to hear that.
All right. Hearing no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we vote in favor of signing the MOU for Mass DOT for LED and Aflan Stop Signs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We've jumped around on the agenda a little bit, but let's cross, let's finish off the first page. And the last piece on the agenda is special town meeting. So if you recall back in May, we basically did not move forward, did not move, there were four or five motions, and the motions dealt with the MBTA Act, and they dealt with some zoning, also somewhat state-driven zoning for ADUs. And we pushed that as a board. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I believe that the concept at the time was, well, I know we all voted not in favor of the MBTA Act at the time, and we did that, and I can speak for myself, we did that because there was still some legislation out in the open, and we were hoping that that legislation would fall to our favor, while we weren't involved with it, it would still help us. None of that legislation has gone that way.
No.
Not a one. So at this point, we've had one hand tied behind our back, I think at this point, the other hand is tied behind our back, and while we don't like it, I don't like any aspect, never mind the MBTA Act, I don't like the aspect of the state saying, "Vote for this", but if you don't vote yes, this is, these are the penalties we're going to apply to you. Those penalties are all financial, and they are, while they started off in a slim scope that really didn't impact us, that is, the powers that have been granted have expanded that to the point where it will affect us. It will affect us in the tunes of hundreds of thousands of dollars, potentially on an annual basis, with grants, other monies, and things like that, so. I don't like it, but we have to, I think we have to move forward, at least with the MBTA Act, and then the other ADUs, we're just not in compliance with state law more than anything else. So we need to address that, because we leave the building department in a rather awkward lurch right now. And whether we like it or not, we need to comply there, so. With that being said, that's the premise for the town meeting. Traditionally, there's always a couple of unpaid bills once the year is closed, if there's, if there's an invoice that's discovered after that point, that gets dropped in there. So we will see what gets added to the warrant, but the purpose, the primary purpose for this is the MBTA Act and the other zoning that we passed or pushed in May. So the date that works for everyone, that being the school, and town clerk, and everybody else, is October 20th. So, and then we can vote on that, and then we need to vote to open the warrant, and then we need to vote on a date to close the warrant.
And what I would ask is, is that if the board is going to approve setting the date of October 20th to also include a time, so it's historically been 6:00 PM, so if we can include the time, so it would be the date of October 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM at the Middle Senior High School, would be the actual motion.
Okay. Why don't we make that motion now? I'll make a motion, vote to set the special town meeting date of October 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, so hold a special town meeting at the Middle Senior High School auditorium.
Second.
All in favor?
All of us.
It's a tie for second. Christine, if you're keeping track. Next, be a vote to open the town meeting warrant. So again, I'll make a motion to open the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're slow, Marcy. All right. And then a proposed closing date, it seems to make sense, would be we would close it on Friday, 9/19, at 1:00 PM?
Noon.
Noon. That's what I said. We'll close it at noon on 9/19. That gives the Selectmen's Office time to properly get everything together and present to us at our meeting on the 24th. So that is why it would be closed then. So I will make a motion to set the closing date for the special town meeting warrant to be September 19th at noon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's the special town meeting.
Thank you.
We've completed the first page.
Success.
Next, communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. With regret, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept Gene Upton's retirement as Assistant Tax Collector. Gene's been with the town for a long time, done a tremendous job, and while everybody has the right to retire, it doesn't mean that those of us that are still working have to like it. But she will be missed, and I guess at that point, did I make the motion?
You did, and I second it regretfully.
And then can we send her a thank you?
By all means. I will tell you, Gene is fantastic. She has been with us for 21-plus years. If we could clone Gene, we would. She's an A-plus employee, and she does a very, very, very good job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next, I'll make a motion to accept Walter Thayer's resignation from the Memorial and Veterans slash Veterans Legacy Committee. The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then with, as we know, Walter has retired, or stepped down, whatever the appropriate word is, from as being our VSO, and David Farrell was appointed a meeting or two ago. So the second part of this is vote to appoint David Farrell to the Memorial and Veterans slash Veterans Legacy Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that committee up to speed. We have no correspondence from the public to determine course of action. There's nobody in the meeting room for public comment. At this point, we will turn it over to the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. So first, a whole bunch of FYIs. One is, is in reference to the DPW Department. As you know, we run a transfer station, and there is a RAM, so when you throw your trash into the compactor or the container, it is then crushed, so that way it compresses it into smaller space, and it gets hauled away. That RAM is starting to fail, and as a result, in looking at it with the DPW Director, it makes no financial sense. We have to replace it. It's only a matter of time before it fails at 100%, but in full disclosure, it is working, but it is working maybe at 50% at best. So actually, what's happening now is, is that as the RAM pushes to compress all the contents, it doesn't have enough juice or power, and so now we are hauling away technically half-full containers, and we get, you know, we get shot at a couple hundred dollars for each haul. So it would have, if the timing was right, we would do this at the annual town meeting in May, but $200 a haul, times out by 20, 30, 50, 80 hauls, just spend $7,000, $10,000, $12,000 between now and then makes no sense. So it's, we're gonna have to spend the 25 grand one way or the other. So I authorized the DPW Director to take it out of his department. We went out to bid, we got multiple quotes, this was the lowest one, and I told him to take it out of his department, but I'm providing an FYI to the board, because this board will be doing end-of-year transfers next summer, which quite frankly, can't come soon enough. And then at that point, I want to make sure you're aware, just in case we do go over. National Grid, I believe you probably are already aware of this, because you either already have yours, or you certainly received the correspondence, but over the last 30 days, they have started a process to be able to convert all the meters from an old analog system to a smart meter system, and therefore, if you want to go on an app, and you want to be able to track and look at it, you can, so you can do that, then just providing an FYI. In addition to that, Grid has also initiated a customer service outreach program. We jumped all over it when they contacted me in August, and so at this point, we have set it up for October 23rd, 2025, which will be at the Council on Aging in the evening, so that way, any resident that shows up, they have any questions, or anything that they want to address, and also find out what programs they might be available, so that way they could save money going into the winter months, we thought that this would be advantageous.
There's been some chatter and talk, some, I got a million messages about the smart meter being changed, and they came and changed it once, and somebody else came back two weeks later to try to change it again. So not perfect by any means, but I think it's an opportunity, there may be two, for us to do something about the aggregate, you know, the town, the town piece, if we're there, if that's there. Which is, people are looking to sign up, find ways to save energy, and is National Grid going to mention that the town's in a, you know, in a purchasing plan or not?
We could certainly mention it. There's, there's no, it's not advantageous for National Grid, whether you sign up with them or not, because on supply, they're required to sell a cost.
Yep.
But they, their pricing is always above market. So, so yeah, we could certainly make sure that they add that.
Or have a table or something.
Yep.
Like, you know, somebody be there. I just, I think it's something, you know, people were searching and talking about different, different, different things, and their pricing wasn't the same as ours, like ours was lower. So I just, I think we should
It is all, yeah. Okay. Okay, PFAS. So a handful of years ago, we had two, we joined two multi-district, i.e. class action lawsuits across the country. One was for opiate, we know we've received in some of those funds. There was also for PFAS. As part of the PFAS settlement, 3M is going to pay West Bridgewater from this past year through 2028 about $810,000. Most of that money is front-loaded, and so you'll see that we just received in $370,000 this past week. That money will go to the Water Department as a general fund receipt, it will fall to their water surplus, they can't just spend it. So their water surplus should actually be larger than normally in the past, assuming everything else being equal, and then we'll see how they want to spend it. But my feeling is, is that during the budget season, is that I do think it's a conversation the board can have with the Water Commissioners, because the Selectmen have really tried to help out the residents as much as they could. We've had about $1.5 million of federal ARCA funds that the Selectmen could have used to purchase an ambulance, to do more sidewalks, to do something, and instead, you provide that money to the Water Department, so we could try to lower any of those debt costs on over $15 million of water treatment costs. So if we did that, I'm hoping they could use some of this money to also offset that debt, but again, it could be a conversation in a later date. But I'm just providing you an FYI, the money has come in, and will fall to water surplus. Two other FYIs that are pretty similar to each other. Public Safety Day will be on Sunday, September 14th, that's the Sunday, and also Fall Harvest Day will be this Sunday as well, that's at Friendship Park. So, so two, and the weather looks like it should be pretty decent this weekend. October board meetings, so I should have probably put a calendar in here, I apologize if I didn't do so. Yeah. So you'll see that today is the 10th? That's okay, that's okay, we can start here. So today is the 10th, I think that works. So today is the 10th, and obviously, we're having a Selectmen meeting, our next meeting is gonna be the 24th. Recall, we normally do the first and third Wednesdays of every month, but we didn't do it for September, because the third would have been right on the heels of Labor Day, which means that we would have been looking to post something and apply Wednesday, Thursday of the previous week. We wouldn't have captured everything. So by doing it that way, and then going back to our normal schedule in October of the first and third, you'll see the 24th and the first become back-to-back. And there'll probably be minimal amount of work between the 24th and the first for the board to have to review. Obviously, if we need to, we can have it, but the only thing that I'm aware of that we need to do between now and either the 24th or the first, is that on the 24th, you're going to place all your warrant articles for the special town meeting. We must do it on that date versus the first, because of notice requirements from a time standpoint. And then historically, you place them on one night, and then you vote on your recommendations on a different night. But that's usually, because that's your annual town meeting, because you'll have 30, 40 articles, and you may have to study some of them. The MBTA and the ADU has been out there for so long, and I think everybody's pretty well-versed in what they are. And if we have some old bills to pay, as silly as it might sound, they just gotta get paid, like, there's nothing you can do. So my thinking is, is that most likely in the 24th, is that you can place the warrant articles onto the warrant, and also take your recommendations that evening, and then we can make a decision as to whether or not you really need to keep the first, or do you do it, move it to the 8th, or do you wait until the 15th? And we don't have to make that decision this evening, we could certainly talk about it on the 24th, but I wanted to give you an FYI on it, so that way, if you had, if you were traveling, you were out of state or whatever, you had lead time, or you could were out of state or whatever, you had lead time, or you could direct the staff as to what you prefer.
I have no, no conflict, any, either way, so.
I don't have a conflict either. I'd prefer not to have back-to-back meetings. So the first would be off the table for me. Um, and again, if there's no pressing business, waiting till the 15th isn't going to bother me at all. Um, so that's where I'm at.
So we can adjust that on the 24th then, right?
Mm-hmm.
See what else comes up agenda-wise.
Yeah, we can. And again, as Chair, if you just need to say we need to call a meeting, then you will let me know and we'll let, let the other board members know. You'll see on the 15th that is still before October 20th. So you still have another meeting before that special town meeting, just in case there's something last minute that you want to decide on, speak about, whatever the case is. The warrant will have already been posted. But recall that at the annual town meeting, we always have those finance committee handbooks. So they're 40, 50 pages long, lots of information. We don't do that on annual. So we don't need as much lead time from a print standpoint. Um, so on the 15th, you can always at the last minute say, hey, let's revisit something if you need to. So, um, at this point, I think what I'm hearing is maybe I place this on the agenda for the 24th and we can relook at it.
Yeah, I mean, with the thought that we're not, we won't do back-to-back unless we have to.
Yeah.
It's more what, how many we have to have in October would be the discussion, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
At that point.
And that's dependent on what there is, you know. I like you guys, but if there's nothing to talk about...
I'm with you.
[laughing]
All right, thank you. Um, then Employee Appreciation Day, there had been, originally we're going to do it on September 19th. That date wasn't going to work. And so as a result, the board tasked us to find another date. They did, and to do it at the Council on Aging. So we have, it turns out that October 24th on a Friday is going to be the best day. So if you were able to take that vote to set the Employee Appreciation Day, then we can talk later about exactly how you want to do it and what you want to do. I will tell you that I do have a donation that, from Eldon Marrera's daughter. If you recall, she was going to generously donate some money so that way it's for the public to know, whatever money is spent on this, it comes out of your pocket. It doesn't come out of the, doesn't come out of the taxpayers' dollars. It comes out of your individual personal pockets. Uh, and, um, and so she made a donation to help for that. So I'll be giving that to the Chair after the meeting. Um, but, um, if 10/24 works, I would just ask for a date and then we'll move forward with that.
Yeah, we, we made it since Jeff was paying for everything.
Yeah, so it's a good thing he's getting the check.
I'm not going to be here that day.
[laughing] I'm okay with, uh, October 24th.
Same.
Currently, yeah.
Same. So let's, let's lock that in.
All right, let's do it.
Thanks, Jeff.
And then, um...
Appreciate you.
And then the only other thing is the next meeting is the 24th, but I also just want to make one announcement. Is that, um, recall tomorrow is September 11th. So thank you to Bill Cavades and our fire and police departments. They do a really good job of Bill specifically. He's retired, um, and, um, he still comes down at 5:30 in the morning and helps set up. Uh, obviously, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a day of somber remembrance, right? So, um, so they will have their annual display. So we don't have anything else planned except for the, the, the timing of the planes. I know that they'll do a moment of silence. Um, other than that, we don't have anything else, but we'll have the display. So every resident could go in and, and, um, you know, and see the apparatus and see the flag. And know that next year, we are planning an event because it is 25 years. So we'll mark it with a formal ceremony as we did, um, you know, when we got to the 20th.
All right. I have two quick asks. That's just that the special town meeting and the electrical, uh, the, was that October 6th? We can just get those, they can the news section or whatever the website, as soon as we can.
Yeah.
The sooner we know. Um, that being said, hearing no additional business, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.